So I'm going to go ahead and call BUHS number six meeting for Monday, April 23rd to order at 6:30. And we are called to order. And the first thing on our agenda is to go into a personnel, executive session. VSA Title 1, 313A1, essentially related to a personnel matter. So we're going to go, we're going to, we're going to call executive session to order. We're going to go into the conference room for the executive session. And then we will come out, out of executive session, back out here. So we come out of executive session on camera. Does that make sense?
Do you have any motion to do that?
Yep.
I made a motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter at 7:30.
Okay. We'll be seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so board members. So I'm going to go ahead and... Shaun, are you all set?
You too.
Alright, I'm going to go ahead and dissolve executive session at 7:45. So we are, we've just come out of executive session. And is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration on a personnel matter.
Seconded? Moved and seconded. Alright, we can't have any discussion because it is a, it was an executive session matter, so we cannot have discussion on it. But, so all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? None? Alright, so we pass this 9-0. So we're done with that. Alright, we're moving on to item three on our agenda, which is the Clerk's Report, which includes approval of the minutes for March 19th and April 2nd. So is there a motion to accept those minutes? Except for, I'm not remembering seeing the minutes.
Yeah.
We haven't seen those, so we're going to wait until we see them.
We saw something, but there wasn't really anything there.
Right.
There was a...
Yeah, but that's something for a later, a later discussion later on in our meeting. So we're going to skip over that. Are there any communications that have come to board members? Yes, Bob?
Just quickly, I received a communication, oddly enough, it was from myself wearing another hat. But I just would like to make everyone aware, including a TV audience, that the Governors' Institutes of Vermont have a still open enrollment program for two or three of their institutes. Governors Institute, very briefly, is an intensive program that allows young freshmen through juniors to spend a week to 10 days at a college campus in the summer, exploring in depth a topic that might be of great interest to them. And it's a, I believe, a very beneficial, I will disclose that I am on the Board of Governors Institutes of Vermont. But if you know of a young person, or if there's anybody here at the school, I know it's been publicized here at the school, there are openings in the Arts Institute, IT and filmmaking, environmental science and technology, and entrepreneurship. There are 11 institutes altogether, the other seven are, are full. But there are some openings available. And anybody that's interested, or you know, wants to present a name or suggest someone, suggest to someone that they consider it, it's GIV.org is the website. And there's information here at the school, I believe, as well. So thank you for that little conference opportunity.
Thank you. And it is a wonderful program, so hopefully some people will take advantage and make sure there's no empty spots. I did have a communication also that I received from the Nyingdon Association of Schools and Colleges. And it was actually to Mr. Perrin, and he reported on this at our last meeting about the five-year progress report. But I also received a letter, as a copy of that letter. And I, as I read through the letter, I think Steve did a, a good job of underselling what a good job that our school's doing, and what, how their perception of us, and what the school's doing, and the administration, and the faculty. So kudos to them, and it's, it's a very nicely worded letter, but thank you. So there's that. So there's really nothing to...
We all got communications dealing with the Black Lives Matter.
Yes. Yeah. And there's, so there's nothing really to approve in the Clerk's Report, so we won't worry about doing that, because there's no minutes to approve, we're just going to go ahead and move on. The next thing on our agenda is recognition of groups and/or individual visitors. We have a lot of visitors here today, which is wonderful, and something that is starting to happen a lot more this year, which in one, in a lot of ways is really exciting, so thank you. Just, just to be clear why everyone's here, because as Russ just pointed out, many of us have received communications from a variety of people related to the Black Lives Matter flags. Is, is everyone here for that? Is there, is there somebody that's here that's, here that's not to speak about that? Okay, just, I just want to make sure that we're, there's not somebody else here for some other reason, and we're lumping them into, with a group that's not for them, for the reason why they're here, so we don't miss anybody. And that's listed under our unfinished business, the Black Lives Matter flag, for all of BUHS. Just to recap, at our last meeting, some members of the middle school students populate, aware group came and requested for the flag to be hung on the middle school, in part of the middle school, on the flagpole. And we've since had requests from other people in the community, as well as the administration, actually, before we even left that room that night, to do it campus-wide. So that's, that request has been made. And I'm happy to give folks a chance to talk, just because of a couple, thanks, yes, Steve?
There is a BUHS, a group of BUHS students who would like to present first, if possible.
Okay, great. I will call on them in a moment.
Should we have a motion to that at first?
To let them speak?
Well, no, a motion of the item A.
Of, for them to finish business?
Yes.
We could do that, sure. Why don't we do that? Are you making that motion?
I would like to.
Okay, good.
I would like to make a motion that the BUHS District Six Six Number Board, Number Six Board agree with many individuals who have come to our meetings, and that we will fly the Black Lives Matter flag on all three campuses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? Alright, so let's begin the discussion portion of this. Folks in the audience, if you are speaking, BCTV has asked me to ask you to please stand up and identify yourself, so that they can get you on camera for that, so that it's just not a voice in a crowd of people on TV, just so that it's clear and you're easily heard and understood. So please do that. And why don't we have the BUHS students that want to present, that have a presentation for us, why don't you all kind of step forward and do that first, and then we can go from there? Alright. Maybe you can start by just introducing yourselves.
Oh, I'm Toni Andor Antonio Omari. I'm in grade 10.
I'm James Shaun DeStrother. I'm in grade 12.
I'm Shady Rose Strickland. I'm in grade 11.
I'm Zee Muhammad. I'm in grade 10.
You have the floor.
So, we want to raise the Black Lives Matter flag, because us students of color feel really underrepresented. And Black Lives Matter isn't saying that all of their lives don't matter, it's saying that they matter just as much as any other lives. And we feel that raising this flag will make a really welcoming atmosphere and community for the school, for us students of color, who face a lot of struggles daily in school related to encounters with racism, so, yeah.
I am one of the newest students at BUHS, and I, when I first came in, I immediately felt targeted because of my skin color. And, um, I felt, like, I felt like I wasn't wanted in the school. And, you know, I've been here for almost six months now, and I, I've gone through racial harassment, I've gone through threats because of my skin color, I've had people threatening to kill me because of my skin color. And it's, school for me every day is a very hostile environment. And I, I do really well in school, but it's hard to show up to classes where you are constantly told that you're not wanted, and that you don't belong here. And so I believe that the Black Lives Matter flag would represent that us students of color do belong here, just as much as any other student in this school. And I believe that the Black Lives Matter flag indicates that there is a community for oncoming students, for students of color who are in middle school coming into high school, for new high school students that transfer to BUHS. And I, I think that the BU, I think that the Black Lives Matter flag would present opportunities to others that weren't presented to me.
Yeah?
So I think it's really important to raise the Black Lives Matter flag for me, because looking all the way back into middle school, when you're an eighth grader, and it's your summer, and you're going into your freshman year of high school, kids are often excited, but it's also really scary, because you don't know what you're expecting, and high school's so big, and all of a sudden you're picking all your classes, and you have to think about college, and all of this is dropped on you. And for students of color, there's this other concern in your back of your mind that, oh, I'm a person of color, I have a different skin color than the white kids, how was high school going to be in that aspect? And I think raising a Black Lives Matter flag would make it so much easier for incoming freshmen, because they're able to visually see that I am represented here, and that I have a community, and that I'm going to be welcomed. So I think that's really important to me.
I feel that not only will the Black Lives Matter flag be like, almost like a beacon of hope for incoming and current people of, students of color, but also it could be an educational tool that will allow discussions to happen in class, and will, so, to hopefully bring awareness to a lot of the everyday racially charged, like, encounters, and about how, what people of color have to go through, and as not even, as not only like the big stuff, like name-calling, harassment, threats, but also the small stuff, like microaggressions, which are small sort of jabs, which not on, or they're not always meant in a malicious manner, and that should be talked about, to show that a lot of like the ideas that we have about certain races and marginalized groups are learnt over time, and that, that you can, you can learn to look past those, and see people as people, instead of just, I guess, to just, to educate people about, I guess, just the basic everyday problems that they may not think about, that people of color have to go through, and just to see a different light to what they say on a daily basis.
Alright, thank you. Is that it? Okay. So are there any board, let me just start with any board members that have any questions, either maybe for the student groups, for the administration in general, before we open it up?
What's the timeframe we were looking at for how long the flag is going to be?
Diversity Day, that long?
Oh. How long? It's going to go up on Diversity Day, but is it, how long will it then be up?
It's been, the common timeframe I've heard is used to be from May 4th through the end of the school year.
Have anyone thought on this? Is, I mean, I think, yeah, we'll do this, but perhaps we should add a standard and procedure for other marginalized, marginalized groups, if they want their flags in the future?
Well, and if I can just jump on to that, Ian. After the middle school presentation at our last meeting, I was in communication with the Supervisory Union's attorney, and I've been in communication with the VSBA and their legal counsel. And they said to us essentially, and I'm not saying it's a bad problem to have, but just be prepared then for a, anybody and everybody who wants to do, to do, to do something similar to this, whether it's a marginalized group. And, you know, from, from a legal counsel standpoint, that the folks I was speaking to, the VSBA said, not even just a marginalized group, it could be somebody that's very anti the school's policies and procedures and things like that, could come forward with a flag that they would want to hang. And we, as a collective group, as a board, would have to then also, we'd have to deal with that, too. So I think your idea...
That's exactly what I was thinking of, and it's why we should set up standards and a system for how to, how to consider these requests.
Because I think you're right, because it's, you know, I think that this feels very comfortable for all of us, for most of us, I think, based on our conversation. And I think for the community, it feels very comfortable, but I think at the same time, too, what's the next request that's going to come before us?
And some could be quite legitimate, because there could be another group that has a legitimate statement, it's like, hey, what about me?
Yeah, which is very true, yeah. Anybody else for the board, or administration?
I guess I'd just like to thank, thank you all for your passion and for your communication for coming, and, thank you.
Ian, so can we add that as a friendly amendment, that we will establish?
Are you okay with that, Shaun?
No, actually, I'm not. I think that the motion says that the Black Lives Matter flag will be shown, strong, doesn't mention any timeline, so it was just a acquiescence that this is what we're going to do, and we don't have a timeline. I mean...
And I think that, I, I think, I think you're right, your, your motion does not say to do that, you know, to have a timeline, or to, and adding, and specifically just says this flag. But I think, I think maybe policies and procedures should come up, should put together a...
That, that wouldn't be part of this motion.
No, we could just have this motion right now, and then establish the procedure afterwards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there would be no, we're not going to add a timeline to the motion that was first presented? I mean, I don't think you should have a timeline.
And, and I'm not necessarily disagreeing, but just to play devil's advocate for you for a minute, Shaun. So if in May, a GLVQ group says, and then for Pride Month, we want to have a rainbow flag up, the Black Lives Matters flag's there, the flagpole's only so long. And I'm just envisioning, before too long, we're going to have, I mean, that's not a bad problem to have, but it's just something to deal with. I'm just thinking, that's the, that's the next kind of thing, is, you know, Pride Month is June, so, okay, rainbow flag's going up in June, that'll be right under the Black Lives Matter flag, and then what's the thing in July? And they, what's going to go both below that? And if we don't have a timeline where, maybe it doesn't stop, I don't know, but I'm just thinking, what do we, how do we handle that?
Well, it's probably impossible to predict where the interest and requests, what order they'll come from, or how many there'll be. And I don't really think it's germane to this conversation tonight, so I think we're here to, you know, it's on the, it's on the agenda, and we're here to discuss that. I think it's an, an item that we're talking about personally.
Without a timeline, the timeline can be, and, you know, should it be up for a day or a year, or three?
That would be my question, is that we're going to have to reconvene the question in September again, or does it have to be discussed, or can it just happen, or are these people going to have to come back again and, and re-propose to us? I mean, leaving it open ended isn't...
That's why I made the motion as simple as it was, and it's sort of an open end of, just, this could be done.
And I, and I think to get to your question, Rick, I think from a procedural standpoint, based on Ian's request, I think it's a good, it's a good one, is for us to set up a procedure on how to do this, and then that would dictate future.
But that would, that's a policy matter.
Right, yeah, a policy, right. Alright, everybody? So are we ready to vote, do we think? Everybody feels pretty good about that? Alright? Alright, so Shaun, would you just read your motion one more time, just so that we're clear? Or the best, the best of your...
Could you do a public comment on this?
What?
Are you even public comment on this? Or that was the only public comment?
I mean, we could do public comment, I would like to, okay, before we do that, I would love to have public, I mean, we can have public comment, if we can keep public comments short, and if people have already said what you're going to say, I mean, I think, you know, because we could be here all night, and is that, you know, so I want us to keep it short, if we can, that'd be great. So is there anybody that would like to add anything to the discussion? Alright, yes?
I just have a...
Can you stand up and just say who you are?
Hi, I'm Aitoris, I'm in eighth grade for BAMs. I just have a question, are you guys voting on keeping it for the rest of the year, or for further, like, what timeframe are you voting on?
There is no timeframe on the motion that's here to...
One of you guys said the rest of the year, and the other ones?
Well, there was, there was a question, and I think that, to try to answer your question, there's no timeframe in the motion that's, that will be voted on here this evening at this point. Somebody did ask the administration, what, is there a timeline? What is, and I think that some people, some of the emails that I've gotten even said, asked, people had asked to have it go up in time for Diversity Day, and stay up for the remainder of the year. So I think that there's folks, maybe even in the group of people that's here tonight, that have different mindsets on what that timeframe would be. But the motion tonight has no timeframe.
Okay, well, like the high school one said, me as a freshman going into high school, it would be cool for the flag to still be here.
Anybody else? Yeah?
So I'm John Hagan, I'm the commander of the American Legion here in town. We've gotten a couple of phone calls about the idea of putting Black Lives Matter flag up, so I just wanted to reassure and put it on the record. The US Code, which is Title IV, Article 1, Section 7, Paragraph F, says it's entirely appropriate to have another flag flying below the American flag, that is not an issue, it is not a sign of disrespect, and therefore, there's completely nothing wrong with doing this. So I just wanted to make sure that was pointed out.
Thank you, John, thank you.
Uh, hi. Were you voting on BUHS and BAM separately?
No, we're voting on the entire complex, so it would be BUHS, BAMs, and the career center.
Okay, and also we brought up the patches, like the middle schooler, having like a gay pride flag and the trans flag maybe patched onto the Black Lives Matter?
Right, Ed, go Shaun.
Well, that, we have to address things that are on our agenda. And what is on our agenda tonight specifically relates to one item. So I think we have to stick with our agenda, so...
And I think that you're, if I could just add on to that, I think that the idea that the middle schoolers did bring up towards the end of their presentation, and you're bringing up now, too, is that could be something that we could address in the future, to add those things to. But as of right now, what's, the motion that's on the table is just for the Black Lives Matter flag. Yeah?
I'm Mike Sostak, I run our Restorative Justice Program at high school, and do some work for BAMs also. And the reason I chose to speak was, and to some extent it may address what Ian brought up, I was, I tried to decide in the school whether or not I should put a Black Lives Matter symbol on my door. And I have 40, 60 kids coming through my room every day because of the nature of the work I do, and, and both people of color and, and white kids. And, and I was deciding, trying to decide what to do, what's the right thing to do. And I finally decided to put the Black Lives Matter symbol up on my door. And I thought you might find it of value, what happened as a result of that, basically nothing. Except, it did allow some good conversations, some good discussions of, well, don't all lives matter? And, you know, the obvious question. And, and it gives an opportunity to talk about some real, to edu, to get, to get into education, which is what our school's all about, to talk about that 63% of people in prison in our country are people of color. And that's far more than the percentage of people who are in our population of color. There are biases in our policing system, in our judicial system, and that's real, I mean, that's real, we can prove that. And that's an important part of education, and that's why the Black Lives Matter symbol is important to single out, because there's something very special going on with people of color. And we look around this table, I mean, it doesn't look like there's any black people here. We walk through the halls of the high school, there aren't, there are very few black people in positions of administration, teaching, other staff positions, they're just not there. I don't know how many of you have ever in your life gone into an environment where, as a white person, you're the minority, and around you is primarily people of color. I've had those experiences because of some circumstances in my life a number of times, and I can say, that's a really, it's an educational and it's an uncomfortable situation. And that's what kids who are here are facing every day. Now they learn to deal with it. And I think our high school does a pretty good job of trying to help kids. But nonetheless, it's different. It's, it's something special. And I think we need to put the flag up in front of the school. When I put it up on my door, I have no intention of ever taking it down. There's no timeframe on that. It is an issue that's with us, and maybe someday it won't be an issue. I'd love to be able to take it down, because it's no longer an issue. But probably in my lifetime, it's still going to be an issue, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
George Carville. I support the flag, I think it's a great idea. I'm a little concerned, or my own thoughts and concerns about a policy that you're going to have to work out, or want to work out at some point, I'm sure you will. I just want to say now that I do not think the policy should be, anybody who wants a flag, gets a flag. I think the board, the town has to show moral leadership, and I think there's some flags that shouldn't be flown.
Yeah?
My name's Rio, I'm a 10th grader at BUHS, and I'd like to say that as a white ally, I think that it would be really helpful, and it'll make the people of color at, the students of color especially at BUHS feel so included if a primarily, if not completely, white school board makes the decision to fly a Black Lives Matter flag. That's all. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? So, Sean, yeah?
Hi, I'm Alex Fisher, part of the group Social Justice Center, and the parent of Tony who spoke earlier. So impressed with the youth of everyone that spoke, thank you for sharing vulnerable things with everyone and on TV. And I think I just wanna add to this a piece of acknowledging that raising the flag is a symbol. It's not changing a lot of policy circumstances for youth in this town, in the school, for job opportunities coming out of the high school. And so, my hope is that both the school board will vote to keep the flag up indefinitely, and will take that as a serious commitment to actually making Black Lives Matter here at BUHS. My understanding from youth in the school is that they feel like they don't. And raising the flag, to me, is a step towards a commitment to change and to making that happen. So I'm just hoping that the flag is not the end of this conversation, at this board level. Thank you.
My name's Angel Velazquez. My daughter's Diamond, and when she was in sixth grade, she wasn't just targeted by a student, she was also targeted by a teacher that called her the N-word. So this is why it's very important to my daughter for this to happen. Thank you.
Anybody else? So Sean, you wanna, could you read your motion one more time?
On the table is a motion that the Bradenborough Union High School, and which includes the Career Center and BAMS, that the board is, votes on allowing the Black Lives Matter flag to be flown on those three flag poles.
And that's a movement seconded, so we, are we ready to vote? Alright, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or tensions?
None.
Okay, great. Excellent, so move to the table. Alright, so let's go ahead and just jump into the next parts of our agenda, which brings us to consent agenda. Is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
Move.
Move, consent, is there a second? Move the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or tensions? Okay, so let's start with finance, building, and transportation.
Finance has not actually met since the last meeting, because we met the same, the same day. However, there are on the agenda, three payroll authorizations that have been approved by the finance committee. However, the numbers that I received back at the meeting, and the numbers that are on here, are slightly different. So I would suggest that, and I just realized that when I pulled this off today, I would suggest that we hold up on those, to make sure we have the right numbers for the last two in March.
So essentially, your report is that we have not met in your...
Oh, the next meeting will be this Wednesday at 8:00 Central Office. And the main topic will be a review of our investment performance by one of the investment managers. We have three different ones.
Excellent, okay, so moving on to WSESU Finance Committee.
We've not met, but we will be meeting May 1st, which I think it's Tuesday at 5:30 in Central Office, on Green Street. And my suspicion is that, and I know we'll discuss it, was the getting of final proposals to the full SU Board for the executive and/or, Executive Committee or Executive Finance Committee. It was brought to the, to the full SU Board the last meeting, then it was brought back to us to revise it. So that's, we've got, we're working on that.
Alright, financial policy, has not met?
We have three policies on the agenda for first meeting. In consideration that this has already been a fairly long meeting, I was going to ask that we push that first meeting to the next meeting.
I think, as much as I agree that it's been a fairly long meeting, I think that I would, I know that for the fund investment policy statement, I think that finance is waiting on that, is that true?
Oh, well, that's the, that's the easiest one, so we can...
So I would, maybe we don't have to, just if anybody has anything to add, they could send it to you, and that could be our first meeting. Okay, Teacher Career Committee?
We met this evening at 6:00, seems like a while ago. And Michelle Hood came to present a report on the science program here at BUHS, and trying to integrate the new generation, science, what was the last S?
Next Generation Science Standards.
Standards, standards.
NGS.
And the PPG. Anyways, the... And so, I just, I won't review it here, but I'd be happy to respond to questions. But looking at the progression of the ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th, and that's sort of, I'm gonna use the word core in an inappropriate way, but sort of the core, the basic classes, and then the different electives. And then we talked about it, Michelle may come back to talk more about how the standards have helped shape the science offerings. It was a very interesting, informative book.
Thank you. BAMS Committee?
BAMS Committee has not met.
WRCC?
Has not met.
Okay. Alright, so that seems like that's it for consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept consent agenda?
So, seconded.
Move the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or tensions?
None.
Okay. Let's... Yeah?
Could I ask for a little shift in the list here?
Yeah.
The agenda. What I would like to do at this time, if we could, is move to unfinished business B.
Okay.
A board, a board clerk.
Clerk, appointment of a board clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Because... Yeah.
Because it's something we need to do, and we're...
Yes.
Pretty, had a pretty extensive meeting. Sure, if administration doesn't matter, we need a couple minutes, we can do stuff, we can do what we got. Alright, so under unfinished business B is appointment of a board clerk. And I think, I'll just jump in by saying, I believe that went around with the agenda, potential template for keeping track of, or to keep minutes. And I'll turn it over to Sean at this point, hopefully everyone's seen that template, but, go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, the reason, Barb helped me with this, she did most of the work naturally. And I looked at the Putney and the Bradenborough Town, and they have such a template, just to sort of simplify things. So, I mean, if you wanted to vote on board clerk, I think I could have more germane things to say right now.
Okay, so do you want to, do you have a motion?
Are you willing to be nominated? No, I'll nominate Sean.
Okay, so you're nominating Sean, is there a second?
Go ahead.
Move the... So that was almost the vote. Is there any other nominations for board clerk? Seeing none, alright. Do you want to discuss that now, before we vote, or?
Yes, I would like to discuss it at this point, which is the reason I brought it up. When I was a kid, my sisters always wanted to have clubs. So my older sister was the president, my younger sister was the secretary. What am I? I'm just the body. Okay, so that's what I'm used to being, the body. So if I am going to be elected as the board clerk, I would have to ask for help. And one of the things I was thinking that would make the job a heck of a lot easier, because of names, like when you have a hire or a resignation, and the position, if the administrators and the central office, and actually the chair, could email me the particulars of the, you know, the actual individuals that we're talking about. Otherwise, it's gonna be very difficult for me to keep track. So it's gonna make, I'm not gonna be that good at this job. So it's gonna make it a little easier, the more help I can get from other people. And I won't include that in the minutes.
Alright, I saw a lot of nodding of heads, so it seemed like that was truly doable for everybody.
And that would be true also with finance. I believe Frank would be the individual that would fill the finance with the warrants and the payrolls in, and whether we use this template or not, sort of, it's a work in progress. Thank you.
Yeah, alright, everybody good, we ready to vote? Alright, all of us in favor of Sean Murphy as our board clerk, signal手势 saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, or tensions? Seeing none, alright.
Thank you.
Sean, thank you, Sean. Excellent, so let's now move to administrative reports. And why don't we start the fire to the table?
Sure. Welcome back, we had a break last week, and during that break, we sent two groups abroad. We sent a group to Costa Rica, and that group was shepherded by BAMS teacher Kurt Johnson and Suzanne Genovis. And they got in at 4:00 this morning. They met with some travel difficulties, but they did fine. They're back, I did talk to Suzanne briefly, and to Kurt as well. Great experience for all of the kids. You know, Kurt said something about, I'm gonna paraphrase, he said, "Some of our kids just drink in the chance to be in another country, and to use language authentically." And that was really nice to see. We also sent a group to Belize, Dan Braden, this is his, I think, third time taking kids to Belize. And he took Nancy Johnston and Dave Mazer along with him, along with a group of 15 students. And they had a fantastic time as well, a lot of tropical ecology. They do a lot of pre-work before they leave, and Dan gives them readings, they have discussions, and then, so they, when they go to Belize, they're actually seeing the very things that they talked about, and having conversations about things that they talked about, and they're looking right at it at that time. So that was a great experience for everybody, and we're glad they made it back. Belize also, that trip, they also have trouble getting home. My understanding is that Nancy Johnston interceded and went to American Airlines, and went right up the chain of command, and I think she took over the plane and flew it home herself. But they're all, which is great to see. We have set our final exam schedule, and it's a little different than it has been in years past, given the number of snow days we've had. Right now, we're looking at our seniors taking exams on the 13th and 14th of June. They will graduate on the 15th at 6:30 on sunny Natavich Field. And then, grades nine through 11 will take their exams on Friday the 15th, and on Monday the 18th. So it's a little bit different, so we'll have senior exams first, graduate them, and then we'll finish up with underclassmen on the Friday and Monday. And then Tuesday will be a makeup day for exams as well.
Can I ask you a question, if there are underclassmen in classes where seniors are taking exams, will they take them at the same time?
That would be at the teacher's discretion, if they want to get it separately to seniors, they can. I would think that they would say, "We're gonna all take the exam this day, and I'm gonna ask their teachers to communicate with families." So they know that if it's a mixed class with seniors in it, that yes, we're gonna take the exam on the 13th. Logistically, that seems to work better.
So will the undergraduates be in, in school on 13th and 14th when the seniors start taking exams?
They would, yes.
And then they'll squish the senior, you've got room.
Right, they are, yeah, it's a chaotic day, a couple of days. You know, it's much easier when we don't have as many snow days, but we've done this a few times, and so, it's not perfect, but it seems to work for us.
Can I just interrupt real quick, Steve? So just, one of the questions I'm getting from the community a lot is, "When is actually the last day of school?"
The last student day...
Is that the Tuesday?
The last student day is Tuesday the 19th.
Okay.
For us, it will be a makeup day, I can't speak for BAMS or the Career Center, or...
Right, anybody else? But that's just, just because of the number of snow days and how many we had built in, people were asking to be... I know I've gotten that question, I don't know if any other board members have. Like, when is school actually out?
And of course, if there's another closing, who knows what we do. But we're not gonna have that.
No more snow days.
Right, no more snow days. Baccalaureate kicks off graduation week, and that is gonna be the 10th of June at 6:00. Generally, it's here at BUHS, either in a courtyard, sometimes we use the BAMS, the department room. That's a great experience, and I'll send more information when that comes along. And then Senior Awards will be on Thursday the 14th at 7:00, and that's another great event. Our practice field, and I think finance may talk about this, we're gonna do some renovations to our practice field beginning in, at the end of June this year. What that's going to mean is that the practice field adjacent to Natavich Field is going to be unavailable for the community to use. It's gonna be unavailable for us to use. We're gonna have to kind of rethink how we do practices and where we do practices next fall. But I, you know, I guess I want to just let everybody know that from mid-July through the end of the growing season, it's likely at this time that that practice field will not be available for any use. That includes community groups as well. We do have some community groups that use it. You know, we're gonna communicate with them directly, they're gonna have to make different arrangements, because if we're gonna redo the field, it's gonna be time to grow and do all that good stuff. So I just wanted that, to people to know that. We're gonna try our long block ACE trial, we talked about that previously. We've put it off a few times for AP exams and other reasons. We're gonna try that on May 21st through June 1st. And it's a two-week period with Memorial Day in there as well. During that time, we're gonna end Block 2 at 11:35, and we're gonna start Block 3 at 12:45. And we're going to let students have some structured time to either have lunch, go to ACE, work independently. And we're gonna try this two-week trial, collect some feedback when it's over, from students and from staff, and decide, is this something we want to do permanently, or is this just an idea that we tried and it doesn't work? We're nervous, but we feel like we need to kind of respect some student requests, and so we're gonna try it, and we'll see how it goes. On May 17th, the Art Department is having a Senior Awards and Art Show at 3:30 in the multipurpose room. If you can stop by just to see the art show itself, it's fantastic. All different media, everything from traditional paintings to sculpture to videography. If you're in the neighborhood, drop in, and then usually the art awards start about 4:00. It's a wonderful event, and the culinary program, Sandy Cormier and her group, they actually do some cooking, so there's snacks too, so it's a good thing to come see. Finally, we're doing social studies interviews for our open position. That's gonna be on April 27th and May 1st. I would love to have a board member join that interview committee. Right now, we've slated to interview 11 candidates. So if you're interested, send me an email, I'd love to have a board member there.
The clock will start soon?
Tentatively now, I would say they're gonna start at 9:00 and go through the day.
Friday and Monday?
Friday, Friday and Tuesday, this Friday and next Tuesday.
Mr. Senator, I believe we mentioned at the last meeting, and maybe we didn't, maybe it was just finance, the track being closed.
Right.
And is it still scheduled for the day after graduation, for about, at least 10 days?
Right, right after graduation. Again, that's weather dependent, if they can't work on the track, they can't finish it, but, right, it's right after graduation.
Right after graduation, so just for people in the community that like to utilize that facility.
Right, it won't be available at all for a period of time. You know, I wish I could tell you what the weather, you know, how that would play out, if they can't do it, and this...
It's gonna be perfect.
It's gonna be perfect, right.
Just like the graduation.
Sunny and 70, so I'm here now.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, let's move on to BAMS.
Everyone, let's see, so just a few, few quick events here happening. Honors Assembly on Thursday, those are fairly new this year, and trying to build off some success there. Thursday, we have, Thursday at 6:00, we have, we call it BAMS Community Connections, and it's basically a parent group. We're trying to, Junie Prair is our parent liaison, and he's trying to kind of get parents more involved and connected to the school. And then the following morning, Friday morning, we're doing Coffee Hour down in the lobby as you come into school. So any of you are welcome from 8:00 to, you know, about 8:45. Parents come in, we have some coffee and some donuts, and people just like to chat. Parents come in, we have some coffee and some donuts, and people just like to chat. And so that's been successful. And we do those the last Friday of each month. Beginning May 1st, we have elementary schools visiting BAMS. So first one is on May 1st, and the sixth graders come and spend an hour or two kind of touring the building and checking things out. So it's part of our transition plan. May 4th is Diversity Day, so that's coming up quickly. And the theme this year, SEYD, is solidarity. And at BAMS, our social studies teachers will be working with our students, they're creating projects, and a meeting with them this week to finalize how that's going to work. But hope to have students displaying projects that they've created on solidarity in their advisory, and then advisories are going to swap, and they're going to be kind of looking at each other's work and answering some questions. So we're excited about that work, and I'm appreciative of the social studies teachers for kind of doing that much work in a course of students. Looks like we'll be adding a little beginning of the day, some type of little celebration out front at Flagpole as part of Diversity Day as well. So that's it. Any questions? All right.
Great. Thank you. All right. Chris, sir.
Good evening, everyone. So few things to share out tonight. Our NTHS Award Night will be June 5th at 6:00 p.m. And NTHS is National Technical Honor Society. And that, I'll explain a little bit what that means, is that it currently serves approximately 100,000 active members and nearly a million members since its inception in 1984. Awarding over $1.7 million in scholarships to date, NTHS honors the achievements of top career in technical education students. Provides scholarships to encourage the pursuit of higher education and cultivates excellence in today's highly competitive skilled workforce. For over 30 years, NTHS has been acknowledged later in recognition of outstanding student achievement in career in technical education. So this year, it'll be held at the Legion Hall in downtown Brownlboro. And I'd like to invite all of you to attend to that great event. And we are actually creating a list of eligible students as we speak for, and I have initialized a substantial amount this year, which is exciting, that qualify for NTHS. So if you'd like to see who is nominated, please come, and we'll have a nice light dinner as well. It'll be catered.
I'm sorry. Is this just for the Technical Honor Society this time? It's not...
We're switching gears a little bit this year, Woody. With the, previous year, we had an award night.
Yeah.
And so we're going to have a day celebration. That will include all students and parents as well. That'll be a separate date in June as well, and I'll provide that date at the next board meeting. And details on that.
Thank you.
About a week before spring break, our Skills USA students participated in their state event I spoke about at the last board meeting in Burlington. And they competed against their peers in the career in technical education world. And I'm very pleased to say that out of the 19 students, we had two students place gold in mobile robotics. And these two students are planning on going to Nationals at the end of June, which is in Louisville, Kentucky, and they're raising funds themselves and fundraising to participate and to pay for that trip. We have three silver winners in First Aid CPR and mobile robotics as well, and 13 bronze winners as well. So congratulations to those students that participated. They represented WRCC, and they're sending schools very professionally. So again, about five years ago, we had five students participate in Skills USA. So see the increases, a nice, you know, participation. And Tim Lawrence was there. He is the National Chair of Skills USA. And he spoke at the dinner and award ceremony, saying, "It's not about the medals, it's about the journey and experience the kids will encounter throughout their time at these extracurricular activities within their CTE experience that is career-related as well." Congratulations to them and their advisors. Our Construction and Architecture Group students will be taking a field trip to Bensonwood Home new facility in Keene, New Hampshire this month or next month. And their learning objective will be to follow up on Bensonwood Home's flagship site visit. The students will be touring the facility, expanding on what they know about Bensonwood and relating to what they learned in the classroom and the shop to real-world jobs and careers. Bensonwood has been a great supporter of our construction program and is part of our advisory system as well, which they'll be hiring, I'm sure, a lot of our students in the future. And John DiVitello, our new construction teacher, has been initiating a lot of these external field trips, which is great to see, and explores our students too. Our engineering construction, or engineering class led by Amy Anthony will be visiting and touring Chroma Technology in Bell's Falls this month. And their objective will be to look at the career pathways in engineering and to expose different manufacturing processes and quality control within that learning environment. So hats off to Amy Anthony for organizing this great trip. And again, another field trip by construction. They are going to be attending Vermont Construction Career Days at VTC located in Randolph next month. And their objective, the description of that day will include heavy equipment that the students will be able to try out and use, like construction skills, activities that they've been utilizing in class, and to put them to use in front of other peers that they don't know and that adults. And there'll be a lot of other career centers attending as well, so they'll be able to associate with their peers. So it's a great opportunity for the kids to get out of the school and the building and travel on a bus, or... And that's all I have. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Central Office.
So just to expand on Keith's Diversity Day, May 4 is Diversity Day for WSCSU wide. As Keith said, the theme is solidarity. The Diversity Equity Committee has been working hard for weeks now. The town, Peter Alwell's been representing the town on that committee. Businesses will be involved downtown. Elliot Street?
Yeah.
Thank you. I can never remember Elliot. Elliot Street will be closed off. There will be a stage set up for music that evening, so I'm encouraging everyone to come out and have fun. School safety is always on my radar. This Friday, first responders will be meeting with all of the administrators from WSCSU, talking about different aspects. You might know that the governor had mandated all schools to be sort of inspected, and he's put together some interesting findings. Nothing specific to any school. It's all statewide, but we'll be discussing those on Friday. And at that time, I'll be asking administrators to think about what was found statewide to see where we fall in some of those recommendations. So maybe coming back to some of those recommendations. I wanted to let you know, May 12th is Blue Cross Blue Shield Mountain Day, Mount Lontasticate, starting at 10:00. The first 100 people get lunch, but it's a fun day to just walk up the mountain. May 12 also happens to be Girls on the Run, so it's a big day. Hopefully, it'll be a sunny day. Won't get rained out. And the last thing is, I want to give you the board self-assessment. If you're new to the board, we do this yearly. You can, I hope, among you this evening, decide a date by which it will come back. It's all anonymous. After you've done it, you send it to Barb Malkowski. She'll compile it and come back with the results. And one of the things that we can do is look at it, administrator should be... Look at it and decide if there are specific goals that we want to set as a result of this self-assessment.
So how do people feel about timeline on completing this assessment? It's double-sided, 30 questions, basically. My recollection is it always goes pretty quick for me, but I don't know about anybody else.
So...
Pretty easy, honestly. Why couldn't we just have it next meeting?
Well, you get to send it to Barb. So you either drop it off to Central Office or mail it in to Barb when it's done, when you're done with it. But why don't we just say that by the next meeting, which is May 7th, that everyone will have that done, have it to Barb before May 7th? And then I'll just check in on May 7th to make sure that everybody did that.
In the past, haven't we actually collected them here and somebody delivered it?
Yeah, we've collected them here sometimes at some points as well. So if people don't get it, get a chance to get it to Barb by May 7th, you bring it to this meeting, and Central Office, Lila will get it to Barb after that meeting. So if you get a chance to get it to her ahead of time, that'd be great too. Okay. I don't have a report, and there's no student council, so...
I have a question.
Yep.
Actually, just that point. It seems like it's been a long time since we've had student council. Why is that?
They have had some trouble ensuring that they can get people here, especially this spring, because all of the leadership are involved in spring sports. So I can, you know, reiterate once again the importance of them being there with them and with the advisor as well.
Does it have to be a student council? Could it be a student?
It could be any student. I mean, traditionally, it's been a student council. I mean, I guess what I would like to think about is, you know, we have a, the YAS class, and I think that would be a good place to draw student representation from. They're very motivated, very involved in the climate of the school. And the work they do, you know, if they came once a month, they could kind of fill you in on what they're doing in their group. And that course for next year already has 22 people sign up for it, so it's already a pretty robust enrollment. So that might be a place to look. So I guess I want to respect student council and go to them one more time and say, hey.
Maybe to think about for next year, maybe it's, they alternate meetings, from one meeting a month at student council, one meeting a month at YAS. And then we get some, we'll get different, we'll get a lot of student perspective that way over the course of the year. Excellent. So moving on to new business, and just to give us awareness of time, we have some policies to review. People got those all yes? Maybe instead of just going through them, we can just, if you have thoughts, ideas, questions, get them to, or suggestions, get them to Ian, and we'll do a second read at the next meeting. Because officially, all we have to do is say that we've seen them.
Yeah. So first reading, all we have to do is confirm that everyone has read them early, and we can discuss them in detail on second reading.
Yep.
I just have a procedural question on the fund investment policy. Just because my memory isn't great. We approved that in Finance last June. So I'm guessing then what happened is over the summer, it never got processed further?
I... Yeah, I think that because of some changes in the policy in the committee, it never, Finance approved it and it never went forward.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that is...
So it hasn't gone to policy, and then didn't come to the whole board for approval.
Right.
So that's why it's here now.
It's already been enacted by Finance anyway and moved on, and essentially, that's the direction we're moving, as a couple of small, well, not so small, but a couple of changes in approach a little bit to allow a little more freedom for the investment folks to give us security and safety. Okay, that's what I thought, I just wasn't sure.
Will those need to be written into the policy?
They are. They're basically, under the direction of Finance Committee, we were already starting to go in that, in that direction. It's just a slight, it's under Asset Allocation Guidelines, a little bit different direction in our, we've had a change.
Which is why we want to make sure that we get this one through, so that you are truly acting with the authority of the board.
Well, the prior one was a little vague in those areas anyway, so we're not, we're not out of line, but...
The changes are reflected in the start, that was held up.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I believe those numbers are correct, Asset Allocation.
On the first two, E11, F34, are those the ones that passed by the WSCSU? Because I know there were amendments that were made soon to it.
Yes, the amendments are in what we have.
And so the, I mean, a quick look at it, you crossed a WSASU, but otherwise, it's there. So, okay. Just wondering.
Okay.
Just on that, when I was reading that through, some of them were changed to be as District 6, but some of them said WSES. Is that just what you just...
Oh, so they are.
So it alternated back and forth, so I was kind of wondering, why was one changed to District 6 and the rest left as WSCSU?
Where was one left? Because I don't, I remember reading through them, but I don't recall.
I think it was the last one.
Transgender?
Well, there was one that referred back to elementary education.
That the food one?
Yeah, that is the food one.
Yeah. So I kind of wondered...
Are those the sort of comments we should just...
Yeah.
Especially something like that, that's obviously just a miss when they went through and changed those.
Updated.
We will just update those before we...
Yeah, all right.
As part of second reading.
So the second reading, I'll have the...
Okay.
Well, no, we'll discuss those changes in second reading.
Okay.
All right. So that's policy review. Under new business, we also have the draft template for minutes, which Sean's already sort of talked about. Does anybody have anything else they want to say about the template that Sean's created? As he said, it's a work in progress, so it's not like it's set in stone, but it's just a tool for the, our clerk to use to get our minutes together. So everybody...
Yeah, I'll sort of have to, I really don't know what to include and what not to include. I think it could be a general flavor of the meeting. I don't think that every, I mean, Lynn Corr used to have it pretty abbreviated, and I think that's acceptable.
Yep.
If it isn't, you can get somebody else.
Which, that's it?
Okay.
Also, okay, so everybody's good on that for the template? And then, under new business, Steve mentioned in his, part of his report, the practice field upgrades, which will be happening when school gets out. So that, so that's already been discussed. Everyone's clear about that? Is there anything else for new business to come before us tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There being no further business before this board, I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second? All in favor? All right. Pose your tensions? All right. We adjourn. Thank you.